Here.
Mayor Protem Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
Here, thank you for that. And so at this moment, I will open up public communications. If anybody is looking to speak, now is the time. Chief Deputy City Clerk, are we only doing public communications in person?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And then seeing that nobody is looking to speak, I will close public communications. And we do have a study session as regarding Ballpark Fire Safety Campaign.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Public and personal safety of the city residents, its businesses, its institutions, and visitors is your top priority as the elected governing body of the city of Baldwin Park. During a streak of both residential and commercial fires toward the end of last year and the beginning of this year, you expressed concern about whether there was anything out of the ordinary going on and that the fires seemed to be occurring too frequently. And while all fires present a risk to both life and property, it was the one residential fire at 14730 Clark Street on June 11 of this year where we had two unfortunate tragic fatalities with an intractable impact to the family, the neighborhood, and the community that prompted your City Council to direct us to look at the state of the fire safety of the city from all perspectives, on the prevention side of the issue, the response side, and the educational perspective. Today, we have assembled a presentation by the many entities who have a key and crucial role in all aspects of a fire safety campaign. You will hear from the LA County Fire Department, the Baldwin Park Police Department, the American Red Cross, the Recreation and Community Services Department, our building official, and our Fourth of July fireworks vendor permit coordinator. I will say that as we coalesce the efforts of all of the entities above, working with the City Council and city residents, we are in a good position to more, to do more, to be more effective on the prevention side of the campaign. With that, I would like to ask our Chief Flores to come up and begin the presentation. And then you'll hear from the others as the slides come up.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, members of the audience. My name is Carl Flores. I'm the Acting Assistant Chief for the area and of course, your proud city of Baldwin Park. And I think most people's concern is fires up or fires down. What is it like crime, so to speak? You make reports like that. You know, over the years, over many years, fires, the amount of construction, the type of construction, the occupancy load, meaning the population within the city has grown. So with that question, yes, fires have grown over many years. I did look, I did analyze the last few years from 2019 to year-to-date this year. And the numbers do slightly increase, but stay within pretty flat level ground. I'll begin with the numbers and we'll go through a little bit of more detail when it comes to the type of fires we've had, the fire deaths and some other details that might, might open your eyes when it comes to fire protection, fire prevention, and the act of putting out fires. In 2019, we had, in the city of Baldwin Park, we had 97 total fires. In the year 2020, we had a total of 124 fires. The year 2021, we had 132 fires. So you see, in just those three years, we had a slight increase with fires overall. From year-to-date, in this year, we've had 30 fires in total to this date. We're probably past the first quarter. We're into the second quarter of the year. As a description, fires happen for many reasons. One main reason, some are accidental, some are intentional. Most of the fires here, you'll find here, are accidental. A minority of them are intentional. And a lot of those intentional ones are undetermined because they're still under investigation. It takes a long time to investigate arson, as a police chief might voice later on. It just takes a lot of evidence and the key points have to point directly to the arsonist, if you want to call. These, this data that I'm handing you here from the years 2019 to today can spread from fires that are a regular small trash can fire to a vehicle fire, to a house fire, to an apartment house fire, to a large commercial building fire, to more than one structure burning at this, from one exposing the next. So the strength of those fires can increase. It takes quite a bit of staffing and resources to put out a fire. Just to explain our responses that we do within the fire service and particularly the LA County Fire Department, we respond to fires in sections of alarms. So to a trash fire, we send one engine, for example. To a vehicle fire, we send one engine. Sometimes we send two if they're on a freeway and the distance from then to a hydrant is difficult. So we send two because they have two water tank, one tank on each engine. There's 500 gallons on each engine, so that's 1,000 gallons to put out a vehicle fire. And those vehicle fires can range from a small VW to a large RV to a semi truck, right, on the freeway. So that can vary. As far as structure fires, we set a first alarm, which is three engines, a truck, a squad, and a battalion chief to oversee the fire. That's a first alarm. We send that to a house fire, a small fire, a structure of some sort. Next level is our commercial building fire, which the matrix for it or the amount of response to it is much larger. We add a couple more engines. We had more truck, truck staffing. We had more BCS, more battalion chiefs to respond to and to oversee a larger incident like a commercial fire. In the city of Baldwin Park, we don't have too many grass fires, but we do, they do come about. They do come out sometimes. As a brush fire, we get a large response. But that those, those kind of fires are not too frequent in the city of Baldwin Park. But your surrounding cities around you do get a lot of brush fires, especially in the season coming up. I predict that our brush season, we're in it already. People say we're in the brush season all year round. But we, as a fire service manager, look at our beginning of our real season coming up, June 1st, if it gives you an idea, you know, when that'll start. Lastly, for what people can do to prepare for a fire, since most of the occupants or the residents of Baldwin Park live in a home, right? Single-family dwelling that we would respond a first alarm to if there was a fire. A lot of it's prevention. Looking what you do, where do you have fire that's created? Your water heater, your kitchen, right? And any electrical device that you might have. Those are main sources that happen in any kind of house fire. So a prevention would be maintenance of those things, of those appliances, the kitchen appliances, your lighting in the house. Make sure someone looks at it occasionally and make sure you don't. When it starts getting a little older, the construction, sometimes the issues are electrical and sometimes they find, they start a smoldering fire which can turn into a larger fire. That old saying that where there's smoke, there's fire is very true. So if you're at home and smell smoke, call the fire department. Get out of the house and have us check it. That's the safest thing to do. I believe that with the number of fires we've had, it's a small increase, but it's relative to what's going on in the whole county, if you want to do a comparison. I'm open for questions or anything else you might have from the council or from the audience.
If it's preferable, let's go through the presentation, Chief, and then at the end.
Very good.
There'll be obviously discussion and questions.
Very good.
Thank you, Chief. Now, the other chief, equally important chief. And Cynthia.
Cynthia is going to make our presentation for us.
Hello, Mayor, City Council members, and the members of the public. What we're going to do with the police department to help out with all the information, we're going to actually start with the partnership with the fire department, May 14. We're having the fire department go out there and talk to our boot camp kids. So they'll be having some information for them too as well, so they could go ahead and give out to their families. And then we did say that we will continue with our events. Whatever information the fire department has to give out to the community, we'll go ahead and continue that as well from here on, as long as you guys need us to do that. So we could continue with the information being out there throughout our events. Other than that, I think that's probably what we could do from our end, trying to implement all the information to our platoon programs. That way, they could relate that information to their parents and talk about all the safeties that they should be continuing at their homes. I mean, if there's any questions, that's what we're going to be doing from our, in the fire, I mean, the police department.
Cynthia and maybe Chief, can you guys speak to how the police department is integrated to the response to a fire? Because you're a first responder for fires the same way that the fire department is.
I think the chief could go ahead and answer that.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. When we do get the alarms, we also do respond to the fire, structure fires, or any kind of fire that occurs in the city of Baldwin Park. So, and especially if there's any suspicious nature of the fire, we also will work with the arson investigators as well to establish, you know, the crime scene as far as preparing it for the investigators to respond. Plus, we also have been involved in some of the arrests of individuals who have been involved in fires within the city. So I think that's about the majority of our responses. We do support the fire department. Whenever they have a structure fire, we do respond. Then at times, we also actually secure the scene, make it, make the scene approachable for the fire department to respond. And as well as any medical emergencies that we might get initially, we also respond with the fire department as well.
I will also say, Chief, because I witnessed it, that your officers act as ambassadors to the community as well in the aftermath of a fire. As the community grapples with, you know, the effects of it, your officers become ambassadors. Incredible. Okay, well, thank you. And then I call them the helping angel of the Red Cross. Erica.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. I'll wait for my slides. Thank you for inviting me to participate tonight in this study session. We're glad to be a partner with the city of Baldwin Park. And we're also glad to be able to provide our services, of course. So just a few slides I will share. Go ahead to the next slide. So tonight, I'm going to talk about our Sound the Alarm campaign, which we are having. I'm going to speak to it in a little bit. But first, I want to just talk about some activities in the city of Baldwin Park that we've had over the last few years. And this print is really small and my vision's really bad, but we have had a partnership, we have had a number of activities in the Baldwin Park, including having installed fire alarms in the past. Not as many as we're hoping to do in the next couple of weeks, but we have had a partnership in the city of Baldwin Park. We have, you know, we have really tried to focus, especially prior to the pandemic, on preparedness education. We actually partnered with the school district and have provided a number of preparedness education in person. And then during the pandemic, we also did some virtually. Go ahead and. So our home fire campaign, so this is one of our nation's most frequent disaster. When we think of disasters, we think of earthquakes, we think of forest fires, wildfires. But really, what really impacts a lot of our communities are the local fires. And even the smallest home fire is a very large disaster for someone who is going through it. So, and here are just some numbers. On average, seven people die every day from a home fire. And more than 30 people suffer injuries from home fires. And there is a cost of more than $7 billion in property damages from fires every year. And I can say recently, one of the city in my territory, the city of Diamond Bar, I was at a fire there and just seeing the devastation that that takes toll in the city, I mean, to the homeowner is just immeasurable. In the city of Baldwin Park, we have had, in 2021, we had four responses. And in 2022, we have had three responses, of course, including the fatality that our city manager spoke about recently or just now. So let me tell you a little bit about what a response is. So what happens is, and it could happen any time of the day, my team will get a notification from, usually comes from the fire department, sometimes the police department, but usually from the fire department about a need for Red Cross assistance. And then our disaster cycles, our disaster team will deploy a team of, usually it's volunteers. And we're, the city's very lucky to have a volunteer here, Ralph Galvane, who will most likely go out on a team. At the time, they will speak with the individuals, the family that have been impacted by the fire. And then the Red Cross would provide assistance, financial assistance. And that will empower the homeowner, the individual, the resident to either stay at a hotel, or if they're staying with family, it will go for clothes or necessities. If the individual is in need of prescription medication, we also assist with that. And then we also provide care after the incident as well. So we follow the individual or the family to make sure that they have the appropriate resources to be able to get back on their feet. Next slide, please. So, oh, I don't think this one's mine. Move back. I think I'm missing a slide. Yes. Oh, the Sound the Alarm event. Okay, so there's one slide missing, but that's okay. I can definitely speak on that. So the slide that was missing is on the upcoming Sound the Alarm event on May 14. So we are very excited to be able to partner with the city. And we have good news. As of today, we have made close to 200 appointments to go into homes. It could be an apartment, it could be a single unit where we will be going in and we will be installing, volunteers will be installing fire alarms. So we actually not only go into the home, we also provide and install, we provide preparedness education. So we talk about earthquake, we talk about if there's a fire, what do you do? You know, how, what are the exit ways and having a plan? We leave behind education in English and Spanish, and then we also have Mandarin. And we make sure it's an experience for the individual, not just an installation of a fire alarm. But we are excited to have 200 appointments. We have about almost 60 volunteers right now, hoping to get to 100 by the 14th. And we are gonna, you know, we are very thankful for this partnership. We're gonna meet at Esther Snyder Park on Saturday morning. And we're going to be here till 2:00 PM, installing smoke detectors and hopefully making an impact in the community. So. And that is it. And any questions? I'm, we're going to say that till the end?
Stay around for the questions and discussion. Thank you, Erica. Let's see. Our building official now, next, Long.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council member. It sounds like we need, I need to address our response to a fire since PD and the fire department already gave indication of how they did it. So with every fire I get a call, I, during the weekends and night evenings, I personally get a call myself to respond. And when I get there, you know, PD is there and fire is there. So I'm the third member. My job there is to evaluate the building, the structure, whether it's safe for somebody to occupy it that night or that day, or apologize to them and put a red tag and ask them to contact the Red Cross. And sometimes it's not easy to send somebody to the Red Cross because it's, their belongings are there. But nevertheless, that's my role. And during the week where we're here during work hours, my staff will respond and the response will be in kind as just what I described earlier. So on the slide, you probably see a bunch of, you know, notes here, but it was done on the fly, so I apologize for not being too organized or illustrated. So first thing is, we all can prevent these accidental fires by, when we do addition or remodel to our home, we at least get a licensed electrician to do something. Secondly, it's important to get a second pair of eyes to look at the work. The majority of the residential fires that I've been to in, under my estimation, is caused by poor wiring technique or smaller size wires that are being used as being overcharged and heated and things like that. So that's one important thing because it's, if you ever go to a fire and you have to talk to people, it's not something, you know, it's not good news. Another prevention of wires, because we tend to buy these extension cord from 99 cent store. You know, the standard six-foot round cord with one head here to plug in five units and just tie it with a nice thin wire. Well, our lives now depends on everything, a computer, a phone, a TV. And we tend to, if we have a small room, we tend to plug everything to this wire. Well, that wire is going to basically heat up and burn. And all that plastics wrap is going to be burnt. And if it's behind your desk and all the dust collected over years, it's going to ignite. You got some paper back there. It fell in there, you didn't know about it, it will ignite. So if you're going to use an extension cord, use a really large gauge. And you can find them at Home Depot and Lowe's. And you see there, a humongous construction grade type of wire that give you a nice panel to plug like 10 or 12 different plugs in that would definitely benefit and keep it all nice and cool when we use our appliances and then computers. Another prevention tip is if you have like a big unit, like a wall heater, or some of us have these window AC, plug it into the wall. So the wiring that we require during construction within the wall is a lot thicker than the average extension cord. Again, those extension cord depends on, if you plug it into extension cord, this unit that draws massive amount of energy while you're you're charging some other, you know, equipment to it, you're going to heat up that wire again, you know? So the major appliances, just plug it into the wall. Easy thing. And major appliance, and I mean microwaves, wall heaters, I mean space heater, ACs and things like that. Those are the preventive stuff. But another one is, if you can't get a fire extinguisher, put it near your kitchen. You know, so a lot of us sometimes just get this bladder of grease and we don't know. It could be small, but it could grow. So that, I mean, you know, those things tend to expire after a few years. I don't know exactly the lifespan, but check the dates and replace them as you need them. On the side of, you know, on a passive type of prevention, are smoke detectors, and those keep us alive. So make sure the batteries in the smoke detectors are working properly. If you look at your smoke detector, there's a test button. Literally say test, push it. If it goes off, the battery's good. But if you start hearing that beep, beep, beep sound, please do replace the batteries on it. Get back to my slide. Yeah, the average smoke detectors, when they're built, they're wired to the building wires. Last thing about terms of safety and fire safety is the emergency escape window. So according to our code, every bedroom need to have a window open to a backyard, a side yard that you could actually climb out and get out in case you notice there's a smoke, you know, smoke detectors coming out, going off. And there's a fire coming and there's smoke going under your door. You have to be able to get out. So just make sure that that window is never obstructed. I know, you know, security wise, we're concerned, but there are mechanisms that you can pop open the security grill if it's installed properly from the inside. So, I mean, for those type of thing, you don't want to be trapped in your house when there's smoke going under your door, even though there's not fire, but there's smoke. Smoke kills. I think majority, a lot of the fires are killed by smoke insulation. People die by smoke insulation. But, yeah. We didn't get it on the slide, I mean, the PowerPoint, but the code manager added a couple of things. And I guess it's prevention or, you know, when you grill, don't put the grill next to the house, right underneath your eaves. Or sometimes, all that fire goes up and there goes your steak and your house. So that's one thing. The other thing about Christmas trees, Christmas tree, if you don't take care of it, it's going to get all dry and brittle. And with the wrong lights, and then some of us even put candles and things like that. From now on, please just throw away those old lights and go buy these new, really low efficient LED. It works the same, they're very good. They save a lot of energy. And they don't, they don't, you know, put out so much heat that would dry those little brittles, brittle needles. Anyway, that's for me for now. All right, so you know where we am. So we're always open to get, you know, to the public to, for information and help assistance at the counter. So come in and see us. Thank you.
Thank you, Long. And, you know, I called him our social communication platform department. Recreation and Community Services were, you know, their ability to get the word out in a fun, exciting, and very usable way is amazingly powerful. So Manny, talk about all the many things you're doing in relation to this fire safety campaign.
Thank you, sir. It is a pleasure to be here this evening. And the Recreation Community Services Department is excited to participate in this fire safety campaign. I realize that multiple agencies and departments contribute in many different ways with the Los Angeles County Fire Department taking on the brunt of the responsibilities. Although our department will focus mainly on informing, reminding, and educating the community on safe habits and practices. And how we're going to accomplish that, we have a multi-pronged approach. First of all, we have a number of large events taking place this summer. We've all been in COVID, so we've, some of these events haven't taken place. So, and I will list a few of these events. And it is our intent to distribute, disseminate crucial information, reminding the community on safe practices. Some of the events that we are working on and in collaboration with American Red Cross, Sound the Alarm, Concerts in the Parks, Movies on the Green, Summer Lunch Program, Fourth of July. And I'll put in a plug for the Fourth of July program. And it's going to be on Saturday, July 2nd at Saravestal High School. And we will have numerous safety tips there. Downtown Street Market. And we will also collaborate with Ballpark Unified School District because they even have a larger social media platform as well as the Baldwin Park Business Association. So in terms of events, we will be highlighting some of the best practices and safety habits in regards to some of those items. In addition, as in our CEO mentioned, our social media reach. We, the city has kicked off a social media campaign a handful of years ago. And it has been improving day by day. And we have Twitter and Facebook and a few other social media platforms. So we will continue to distribute and highlight information on that website or platforms. In addition, we have the Ballin Park Now and the Ballin Park Now comes out four times a year. So we will be working with LA County Fire, uh, Los Angeles County Fire Department in regards to including articles, uh, and educational information to remind the community and businesses uh, about safe practices. That publication comes out four times a year. The, it, the issue is at the post office as we speak and it should be delivered tomorrow. Some hard copies are hot off the press and right in the back of, of the room. It's May, June, July for this issue. The next issue will come out in August and it will include August, September and October. And I'm happy to announce we are having a household hazardous waste and electric collection event taking place on July 9th at Morgan Park. We haven't had it for a few years, so that is an opportunity for everyone to clean out their garages and dispose of those type of items that are hazardous. In regards, uh, to the items as part of the presentation, and I, I apologize David or Mark, I forgot to tell you to continue, I have my, my own notes. I am on House, next one, please. Next, and next one. And right there, uh, the education has already started with this present, presentation and just a helpful tidbit, uh, in terms of transporting some of these items, uh, please go on Los Angeles County, uh, Los Angeles County Public Works website, there's some, uh, very good information, but in, and I'll read this real briefly, household hazardous waste is any product labeled toxic, uh, so something to keep in mind. In terms of the E-waste, every, everyone has E-waste in their household in terms of old TVs and computers and things of that nature. Uh, so once again, our event is taking place, uh, at Morgan Park. It is a one-day event and is going to be on July 9th and that is a Saturday. All you need to do is put the items safely in your car and they will open up the trunk and dispose of them properly. And just as a one last footnote before I conclude the presentation, in regards to transportation, please follow their transportation limit of 15 gallons or 125 pounds of hazardous waste per trip when driving your HHW E-waste to the county, uh, permanent or the temporary centers. So just as a footnote and this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. And last but not least, it would be Patty, our, uh, Fourth of July fireworks vendor permitting coordinator, and she's been in the midst of the pre-application process, almost concluded, but soon we'll know how many and where, uh, and then of course all of the fire safety campaign that is associated with fireworks. Patty?
Mayor, City Council and members of the public, um, as far as the fireworks applications are concerned, I did have my first application due date on Thursday of last week. I do have so far four firework organizations, one is, I'm sorry, firework participants, one is contingent based on the supply of fireworks. Because of COVID, unfortunately, the supply of fireworks is limited to the organization, so firework reps cannot get more than three or four, uh, depending organizations, nonprofit for the city. The three that are for sure have applied and have processed their deposit. Also, um, they did participate last year, so they're the same groups that participated the year before. There is three, which is the Saravista Don's Bands Booster, the Tough Kids Organization and the Lucha Organization. Also, American Legion is the contingent, uh, nonprofit for right now. I will know more information in June, that is when my second application due date is, is, and the locations will be listed at that time in June. Let me see, and that would be June 15th. The sales of fireworks do start June 28th at noon and they do conclude on July 5th at midnight. Enrique did mention an idea when we did meet as far as, uh, the first meeting for the fireworks, for the fire safety. And he did say and mention about safe and sane firework flyers to be posted at every location for the fireworks booths. And I believe the fireworks groups will be, um, will go ahead and do that. I don't think they would have a problem with that. Um, because of COVID, the numbers have gone down as far as, um, participants. 2020, there was only four, 2021, there was only three, and again, this year there is three, um, with one contingent. Includes the information for fireworks for right now.
Thank you, Patty. That concludes our presentation now. Um, uh, back to you, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you, everybody, for that useful information. Um, I will go ahead and give the floor to Council in case they have any questions or comments.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilwoman Revina.
I just wanna thank everybody that brought forth all this information. It's, it's very important that our community is informed of what the city is doing, um, what the fire department does, what the city does, what the police does, what the Parks and Recreation, every single department is getting involved to make sure that we are aware, uh, of fire safety. I really appreciate this, um, presentation because a lot of times people don't know that they should have an emergency plan, that they should have practices with their family on how to exit their house, whether it's a fire, an earthquake. Um, thank you for providing those services. Uh, Sound the Alarm, I'm glad you're not just providing the alarms, but you're actually providing that service, that education for families, because like I said, a lot of people don't know they should have a plan in place. We don't think about it until unfortunately it happens. And I think it's a great idea maybe to continue this on a year-round basis since California uh, has a peak time for fires and we're in it right now. So thank you, everybody, for your presentation.
Thank you for that. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, am I?
Yes, Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you. Uh, again, thank you for, uh, all the folks that, uh, made the presentation today, you know, as, as we all have been witnessing over the last year and last couple of years, uh, there has been an increase in fires, uh, not only in fires, but some other items. So I do appreciate, uh, that we're looking towards that, you know, when it comes to, uh, you know, fireworks, you know, two years ago, I believe, uh, we lost, uh, you know, two individuals in one night, I think it was in 2019 or 2020, if I remember correctly, um, due to illegal fireworks. So perhaps we could ask, uh, the fire acting chief, uh, for the area, you know, what is it that we can do to help prevent and stop, uh, the use of those illegal fireworks? Not the safe and sane ones, of course, but the illegal fireworks.
In answer to your question, uh, there's a lot that individual can do is just spread the word, meaning, uh, each family member, mother, father, brother, whatever your relation is, spread the word that it is dangerous and that even with the safe and sane, you can get hurt. Right, we have many calls, uh, Fourth of July is probably one of the busiest, busiest times we have in the fire service. Overall, we have all year, we have the most amount of calls in a short amount of period are, is on July 4th. So, and that spreads from a couple of days before and a couple of days after, but on that particular night, we're very busy. The other thing people can do is just be alert, be aware of your surroundings, you know? If, uh, you have something left on the counter that's cooking, make sure you turn that off, right? We have a lot of food on the stove that burns and sometimes it spreads and exposed to the kitchen. Be aware of your neighbor and what they're doing. They left something on, you're, you're with them and you just check, check for them. So be, be neighborly and, and let them know that they, that they left all the lights in their house, you know they're gone, uh, you see smoke, you wanna call 911 for them, that sort of thing. So just be aware of your surroundings is one thing. A lot of publications are out there to, to help you itemize and get a list together what you need to do in preparation. There is a website with our, with our fire departments, it's, uh, uh, fire.lacounty.gov, it's a WWW, fire.lacounty.gov. And then there we have some PDFs that you can download from, uh, it's, uh, there's, there's a few of them that explain what your articles that you can collect and, and, and preserve and take out at the time of a fire, what to do after a fire, there's a booklet in there for that. So there's a few, uh, uh, very important, uh, documents in there that you can download, print and keep with you and, and make that part of your plan. Uh, we also have one that's called FIRE, it's, it's an exit plan that, uh, we used to call in, in many parts of the state, they still have you, there's a fire in your bedroom, you wanna close the door and then when it's time, exit through to find out your exit plan. But many times the fire is not in your bedroom. So if you're in the middle of the night and you smell smoke and you feel heat or something on that door, don't open that door. That's gonna, you know, spread the fire in the room you're in, no good. So your exit will be to close the door, don't open it and exit the window. Now just beware, if you're on the second floor and you're doing the same pro, same program, you need to have a pre-planning in, in place so you can have a ladder, the rope ladder or some kind of hook ladder to get yourself down safely. So there is some, and they talk about it in some of those downloadable PDFs that are on the, on the website. Uh, you can go to LA County, you know, uh, prepare for an emergency, you can look that up on Google and you can find a lot of publications that's put out by the county, uh, through our Office of Emergency Management, that's another source to have for that. But, uh, in answer to your questions, there's a lot of things, as long as there's the public education, uh, people's awareness of what can cause fires and, uh, to call 911 early and, 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 uh, and, and get it, get yourself out of that house is the important thing to remember. Does that answer your question?
Uh, thank you for that informative, uh, information. Yeah, thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Mayor Potem.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, Councilwoman Hernandez brought up the illegal fireworks, uh, which is a, a great thing. I remember last year we did our Fourth of July educational campaign where we posted on the bus shelters, more key, uh, social media, uh, platforms, website, uh, we did flyers. We have to remind the, uh, community that we are finding them and we have to strong on that message because, uh, last year, I think was probably the first year that we noticed, uh, less fireworks, illegal fireworks than the prior year. And actually, even throughout the year, it hasn't been as crazy, at least in my area as it's been in the past. Uh, so maybe if we can continue with that, uh, campaign and make sure that we have all that information out there, uh, and let them know, remind them what they will be finding if they are caught with illegal fireworks.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I wanted to add one more thing, uh, Commissioner Ricardo Vazquez, he just texted me, he has an excellent idea, um, to provide a fire education to our seniors, maybe bring it to the senior center and have a full-on presentation, uh, and hopefully, um, educate them, give them resources or, and if possible, have, um, somebody come and check their homes to make sure they are safe and that they have fire alarms. Because a lot of times they may not be able to get the information, so we can provide that information at one of our senior centers events, that would be great, great idea, Mr. Vazquez.
Great, thank you for that. I think that's a great idea. Um, and then I know that we've, uh, increased our hiring efforts for PD, so, uh, I think maybe hopefully this year we can plan ahead and, uh, have some more officers out there for enforcement during the month of, uh, well, for late June and then of course, early July.
Yes, and hopefully we, we do have the, the personnel, it's gonna be a stretch, you know, that's, that's one of our busiest calls, uh, for service, obviously, you know, running from call to call, uh, dealing with illegal fireworks. Unfortunately, you know, once the fireworks are, are used, a little more difficult to deal with. My, my, uh, think, something that would, that the community should understand is that if they are aware of neighbors who do have those kind of, um, fireworks and are keeping them in their homes, that they should at least call the fire, or the police department or the fire department and let us know where they're at so we can work together to, um, respond and confiscate that, that, those, uh, fireworks. If you, if you recall, the fire, the, uh, the incident that occurred in the city of Los Angeles was devastating because of the amount of fireworks that, that, that individual had stored in his, in his garage and his backyard. So, you know, it, it doesn't take much for that, uh, to go off and it, it could result in property damage and, and loss of life. So my, my thought is, is that I, I would strongly encourage if, uh, our, our residents in Ballin Park know of people who may be storing a lot of fireworks or have any kind of illegal fireworks, to give us a call ahead of time so that we can actually, um, see if we can secure that, those fireworks before they're, before they become a, a problem for, for all of us.
Yeah, great point and, um, I think we're definitely in a better position than we were last year with a lot of that stuff and then I, I agree with Mayor Potem, we should be, uh, continuing that campaign. So just to remind everybody. But if there's no more questions or comments, I do wanna thank all the speakers for being here today and sharing that information with us. I think it's very useful and very important for all of us to keep that in mind. Not only is it a danger for the community and, and the families that live in those homes, but it's also, uh, you know, it drains resources in the community and it, and it jeopardizes, uh, states in other situations. So it's very important that we prevent rather than mitigate. So thank you for that. Uh, moving on, I don't believe that we have anything else left on our, uh, open session, so we will recess to closed session.
Thank you, everyone.